One, it's nine AM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session of September the third of 2024 of the Limestone County Commission. On a public comment, we allow three minutes, so try to hold it to that as much as you can where everybody can have a chance to speak. And like I said before, we have one here from Elizabeth Stewart that will be read in. If you ever can't make it in, you're more than welcome to email in a public comment to be stuck into the minutes or whatever. So Ellen, you ready?
Cheryl Russell.
Ms. Russell, just step right up back to me. Everybody step right over to the microphone, please. How are you doing this morning?
I'm well, thank you. Good morning, Commission members. Partnership for a Drug-Free Community appreciates the opportunity to share with you this morning. Before I start, I'd just like to ask for show of hands. How many in the audience either has a family member, a friend, or a coworker that has been affected by drug substance use or alcohol use? My heart goes out to them. That's why we're here. Partnership for a Drug-Free Community was started in 1988 by Deborah Soul, whose only child, only son, had been killed by a drunk driver. Throughout the years, the nonprofit has operated out of Huntsville. In 2019, recognizing the opioid epidemic, Partnership did a needs assessment and decided to expand what they have been offering for services to include recovery resources. We operated almost exclusively via telehealth during the pandemic and the shutdown. Since then, we have reached people all over North Alabama. If there is an individual that has a substance use disorder regardless of county, we have helped them. Our services include intake, peer support, case management, and connection to treatment. We do that vital first step, the ASAM assessment, that helps the individual to determine where they are on the continuum, where they need to go for treatment. I started with Partnership for a Drug-Free Community only one year ago yesterday, recognizing that we have an opportunity in North Alabama to finally make an impact in the opioid issue if we use the opioid settlement funds wisely. We applied to the Alabama Department of Public Health for a substantial grant, which we were successful in receiving. We signed the grant on June 4th. We hired new peer support, new case managers on June 3rd. We hired Kimberly Lamar, our administrator, for resources for recovery on June 17th. And since then, our numbers are up by 200% of the individuals that we've been able to do assessments and connect them to treatment. And so you may ask, why am I here today? We looked at North Alabama, and we looked at the breadth of what Partnership for a Drug-Free Community could do out of our Huntsville office. And so we chose Morgan, Marshall, Limestone, and Jackson Counties as the contiguous counties around Madison to say, if we could make an impact, who would we like to offer our services to? And so we have sent each of you individual packets in the mail. I hope you have received them. So our offer to you today is to provide the same kind of care, compassion, and connection in Limestone County as we have done in Madison County. And I think my three minutes are up. I think that's what that ding dong was for. And I have said all I really want to say, other than we would appreciate a follow-up meeting. We would love to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Limestone County. What do you need? We know the numbers are up. We know by the show of hands today that the issue is not going away. And we have funding. We believe you have funding, and we would love to partner with you and offer our services.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Brian Jones.
Mr. Jones, how are you doing today?
Doing well. We did not get this on the agenda for this morning, but we're asking that the Commission vote on it for next time. ADECA has come out with a grant. They just put it out on the 22nd of last month. We have until October 11th to apply for it. I actually already sent it to Krista. It's the Law Enforcement and Traffic Safety Division State Crisis Intervention Program. The way this is structured, it would come through the county, and so that's why we sent it to Krista. We have to apply for it. It's kind of interesting the way how the system works, is that we do the application, and then they send it back to us. We fill in all the blocks, because this is a really broad one. But we're asking if y'all will go ahead and give approval for us to go ahead and apply for it, and then we'll see how it goes. As a continuing update, we checked our books this morning. We're 120,000 upside down. All right? Anybody have any questions?
And it would be on the September the 16th, or something like that?
That would be the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that. You talked, you got everything with the Krista, everything she needs.
I sent it to her. When we got it, I sent it straight to her. And when I saw you in the hallway, I was on my way down to see her, so I'm gonna do that today.
All right. Get everything to us, and we'll get it on there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brian Lorge.
Mr. Lorge, how are you doing today?
Doing good. How are you?
Doing great.
Good morning. I am Brian Lorge, and a resident of District One, and I thank you for the opportunity to address the Commission. I apologize, because I'm doing two things today I usually don't do. One, I'm basing some of this on secondhand information and rumors. I like to have the facts at hand before making a statement. Number two, I don't have a good solution or suggested course of action. I really don't know what the best answer is. My concern is about the animal pound. It seems like we are at the same place we've been for at least the previous two years. We have a little less than a month before the existing contract for the animal shelter is up, and don't have good options. From what I understand, the current contractors come in with an unsupportable bid. With the limited resources the county has, with their many requirements, it is unreasonable to expend more dollars on the shelter. But the only other current alternative is the county building and operating a shelter. I don't believe there's time to get a suitable shelter ready now, between now and the expiration of the contract. I find it hard to believe the county could provide even the minimal requirements as provided for the Code of Alabama in a month's time. Based upon Commissioner Barstail's fiscal concerns about the pound, he asked for permission to seek alternatives last spring. At the May 3 work session of the County Commission, the engineer requested permission to get a cost estimate for the design of his shelter, along with cost construction. I don't know the status of this effort. It's been four months since this was discussed, and I'm not sure there's been any progress. Additionally, I believe this is a quality of life issue with the citizens of the county. I believe the citizen desire facility that goes above these minimal requirements to reduce the number of animals that need to be euthanized. One thing I would suggest, if the county does pursue building a shelter, I urge the Commission to establish a working group or coalition involving the already existing hard-working rescues in the area. These groups already have connections to facilitate the rescue of animals and reduce the needless euthanization of many of these animals. The connections that have been developed over months and years with rescues throughout the South and other regions of the country are critical in facilitating these rescues. If the county starts from scratch, it will take months or years before any noticeable number of rescues could take place and costing the county additional resources. I'm not sure the Commission fully appreciates the effort and coordination that it takes to make these rescues happen. Whatever course of action the Commission decides to take, the welfare of these animals must be paramount in the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorge.
Kendrick McNamie.
All right. You might step up to the microphone, please. Morning. How are you doing?
Good, thanks. My name is Kendrick, and I have been active in the animal welfare world for 29 years, in Cleveland, Columbus, Ohio, Orlando, Denver, and Phoenix. I'm not trying to, I just need to give you like my informal resume. I've never done it as an employee. It's always been on my own time. And I was integral in actually getting a brand-new shelter in the city and county of Denver. It was severely outdated, like the one is here. Luckily, it was run efficiently by a government entity, so they were also in charge of animal control officers, animal protection legislation. Everything worked cohesively. You know, I did everything from fostering res dogs for them, retired laboratory beagles. So I've had my hand in a lot of physical things with the animals and a lot of the legislation and working with local communities and governments. I've emailed all of you the kind of common sense, logical things that have worked for the other places I've worked with, including ways to fund a shelter, how to work with other community members, rescues, just other advocates. There are a ton of options. There are many, many solutions. I included ways of getting adoptions up, getting euthanasia rates down, actually making more money from fines and fees, and updating the legislation for animal welfare in the county. And unfortunately, euthanasia is something that we are concerned about. I'm pragmatic about it, because I know that it does happen. We can't save all of them. Until everybody is adopting their pets, until everybody is not buying from a breeder, until breeders are put out of business, then we're going to have, until everybody's spaying and neutering, we're going to have pet overpopulation. And it's better to be humanely euthanized than to die in a ditch after being hit by a car alone. It's better to have them safe and healthy, keep the community safe and healthy. There have been times where residents put themselves in danger to try to help an animal. They can get into car accidents. They can get bitten. The spread of disease can be rampant. There are just so many things that need to be addressed. But I feel that starting in this cycle is having a shelter be built, because once you build it, people will come. You will get public relations. You will get the community support behind you. We all, we're all here because we want this. And we support you making this change. We are here for you to talk to. We want you to discuss everything with us. We're here to give you ideas. We're here to be positive about it. I'm sorry. I don't usually get up and give a dialogue. It's usually a discussion, so I apologize for this rambling. But I think we can inspire one another, and we can work towards a common goal of alleviating animal suffering. Yeah, I just think that we can face this challenge, and we can do it well, and we can do it together as a community. And I just feel that there's so much optimism that we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amanda Lopez.
Good morning. Hello, everybody. My name is Amanda Lopez. Good morning, sirs. I'm a member of the community and a volunteer and a foster for the animal shelter. We have fostered upwards of 150 animals. The idea of a two-week time limit is pretty shocking to those involved on the day-to-day with the animals. I'm appealing to you to, if you don't understand, then to believe that two weeks is not enough time. If you believe it's enough time and you stand behind that, I would challenge you to please spend a day, spend half a day at the shelter. Spend it with Trish. Spend it with my mom, Kathy, who works there. Go see the animals. These are quality animals. These are not snarling, you know, problem animals that need to be disposed of. These are animals you would bring into your home. These are animals that could serve as service animals. I understand that there are logistics and that money doesn't grow on trees. But I feel like there would be a little more brainstorming, and maybe we could find a way if everybody was on the same page and understood the quality of these animals and the significance of this problem. By imposing a two-week time limit, I don't believe you're fixing the problem for the community. I believe you're bandaging the problem. The attention should be primarily on reducing irresponsible breeding and the dumping of animals, dumping of large litters of animals. It's cruel. The fines imposed for these cruelties alone could fund the shelter. The creation of these animals is the problem, not the swift destruction of them to control the exploding population. Please go visit these animals. If you believe they should be put down, spend some time playing with them before they have to go. Sit with them. Be with them when they pass, because I do. Trish does. A lot of us do. We know what that is. We know what it's like to see a soul leave an animal. And that's a real thing, that we did, that we did. And y'all are the one in control to help turn that around. It can be done. Humans made this problem, and it's humans' duty to make it right by showing them kindness and humanity and mercy. Imposing this limit, I imagine sounds quite easy and very black and white when you're looking at figures on a paper or if you're behind a keyboard. But when you're there, when you actually put in the time, you see that it's not so simple. The mass majority, vast majority of these animals are good and sweet and well-behaved, and they're even trained, some of them. They'll shake your hand. They'll take a treat really gently from you. They'll lick your hand. They'll want to take a walk with you. They love you. It won't much matter if they only have two weeks. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nolan Baker.
How are you doing, sir?
My name's Nolan Baker. I live in Windbreak Subdivision out near Southern Gales. I know part of the today is the plat for Murphy Homes. We have no issues with that. We've looked at the plat, and I think it's going to be great. One of the things I do want to talk about is, is three years ago, Mr. Sumet was nice enough, kind enough, to come out and bring an engineer and look at our streets and our subdivision. They're 30 years old. I know they weren't built to the current codes when they were built. They weren't built right. And I know, as has been said this morning, money doesn't grow on trees. But they're 30-year-old streets that are sinking in a number of places, about every 200 feet through the neighborhood. It's sunk several inches. They addressed, they looked at it and agreed it needed to be resurfaced. But due to a number of reasons, and I understand those, a number of those reasons, it just hasn't happened. But it's been three years. So we'd like to just bring it back to light, get it on the radar, and try to move it up the scale a little bit again. It really needs to be done. And I would like to see it happen sooner rather than later, if that's possible. And I know there are issues out there, but three years is a long time to wait. And I know he's aware of that. We talked several times, and I know he's doing what he can, but maybe we all need to help him a little bit. So thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning. I'm gonna cut mine short so that more of the animal shelter people can talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Nolan.
Carissa Callen.
How you doing this morning, Carissa?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carissa Callen. I'm a Limestone County resident. And I don't live in Athens City. I don't live in Huntsville City. I don't live in Madison City. I'm just Limestone County, Limestone County only. And it is tough to follow all the animal shelter people. We have two dogs, and they're very precious. And when I sit down to read a book, I love to have my dog beside me. So that's my little segue into the library. We all love the public library. And the public library here has been a wonderful asset to the community, and I want it to continue to be. I want you to continue to include in your budget money for the library. But I also believe that Limestone County residents need representation on the library board. If the library board chairman has not been by yet, he's coming. It's time. It's budget time again. He's going to be coming to ask for the next year's budget. I just ask that you keep in mind that there is no current representation on the board. You already know this. You're well aware. I would ask that you come to the next library board meeting in September. Colin, you were there at the one prior to the last one, and I appreciate that. They are making changes to their policy to be in line with state guidelines, and that's great. They still got a little work to do, but they're on the right path. But now it's important to have county representation. If you're going to be giving money to the library, and I hope you do, we want you to, you need to have representation on there that can come back and report and let you know how things are going with the budget. So I just ask that you keep that in mind. And you're going to have to work with the city. You're going to have to work with the city attorney. I hope that's already in process. But as a county resident, I do ask for representation on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Carissa.
Judy Heaney.
How are you doing this morning?
I'm Judy Heaney, and I live in Limestone County. And I'm here about the animal shelter on a personal level. I took care of two dogs, neighbor dogs, that were badly abused for 10 years. I went down, fed them every morning, every night, gave them their flea medicine, had them taken care of in every way I could. But they needed so much more. The man was a drunk. I'm sorry to say he has passed away from that. But I, for 10 years, took care of these two brothers that were brought up together. And one day, I couldn't find one of them. And he had crawled in the back of a building behind the house through a little hole, and he, they were both huge dogs. And he got in there, and I couldn't find him. He didn't whine. He did it for three days. And I finally noticed the door was a little open, like he was trying to get out. And I got him out, had to almost carry this 80-pound dog to get him up to the house. And some neighbors came over and helped me, put him in the car, took him to the shelter, took both of them. The first thing they did is the doctors took care of them. They got rid of the fleas. They x-rayed them. They took such beautiful care of them. And the thing that, that stood out really big to me, that they care about these poor things that nobody else cared about except maybe me. Okay. I went to visit them at the shelter. I went in to see the dogs. And I'm sorry, but this makes me cry, because they were really happy to see me, because they knew me for 10 years. But they went to these people who took care of them, just left me. And I said, they're okay. They're okay, because they're taking really good care of them, and they care. I saw your tears, and ever since, I've had mine. Because I know these people have just given their lives to them. I see her go home and cry at night, because she wants so much for these animals to be taken, taken and loved. Found an animal in there that she showed me that looked a lot like my skipper keys. And she says, they're going to be put down by Friday. They're going to be put down by Friday. He is, if we can't find it home. And I prayed that whole week. I'm not bringing religion to you. I'm bringing, I prayed all week. I knew God would take care of them. About two weeks later, I said, what happened to it? And she said, oh, it got adopted. And it's a service dog, and it now lives at the end of my street. And I can watch it. I'm just, yes. But I saw a woman on the phone, I don't know her name, but she sat in that office, and she called everybody she could think of to help this. They not only care about the animals, they care about their health. We have doctors there to immediately help them. And my time up, I didn't even hear it. I'm talking to myself here. But please, 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 give them time to find a home for these animals, because it's just perfect. I wouldn't want anybody else to take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Carlisle.
Who did you say?
Suzanne Carlisle.
Suzanne Carlisle. I'll write it behind you. How are you doing?
Good morning. I'm Suzanne Carlisle. I live in Athens, not necessarily in county, but downtown. I'm involved with rescue. I serve on the board in Huntsville for Felines and Canines Rescue Center, and have done that since their inception for about six years now. I have a question. I'm not used to doing this, so I had a question. The part about the two weeks euthanasia, is that new, or is that been in the deal all along? Can someone answer that?
Well, we normally don't get into questions and answers. We can answer during the middle of the, Drew can answer it if you want to. Wait, Drew.
So our, the contract, our prior contract was silent as to that. And that, that term tracks the language. Well, the language of the statute of Alabama requiring counties to have animal pounds says that the county has to keep an animal for seven days. Seven days, if you don't know the owner, if you know who the owner is, if the owner is identified, got to give the owner seven more days, hence 14 days, to give the maximum time period under the statute. So that's, that's a new explicit term, although that has always been sort of implicit in the law. That can be done.
Okay. I'm not sure if that really gets me, but okay. So I guess I'm calling to, I mean, I'm here speaking to see, you know, that's just, in my mind, totally unreasonable. There's just...
No!
We've got, we have rescues. We have things, but you've got to give us time. I mean, we can't, we cannot do this. I mean, we cannot do, Athens is, I've lived here my whole life. I am 63 years old. And I have, and I just, I don't understand why we're not doing better for our animals and livestock. We are growing like gangbusters. I've never seen such growth in Athens in the last couple of years. Never seen such growth. But let's, let's grow our shelter. Let's take care of our animals. We can't keep bringing in people and growth and think they're not bringing in animals too. I mean, we've got to do better. I don't know where it starts, guys. I don't know any of you. You don't know any of me, you know, me. But I don't know where it starts, but it's got to start with y'all. It's got to start with the city and that council. It's just got to start somewhere. Rescue is just not a lot of crazy dog and cat ladies and people out here. I mean, it's a real thing, and we, we're proud of it. And this county's got to care more and get proud and of our, our community. With me being said that I work in Huntsville and am on a rescue board in Huntsville, my heart's still of Limestone County. I mean, this is where I was born and raised, and this is my community. But I am begging for y'all to help and do something about this horrid situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Otis Nichols.
Otis, how are you doing this morning, Otis?
So far, so good. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am Otis Nicholas, longtime resident of Limestone County, and I thought long and hard about what I think county services should be, and how much you should budget, and what the priorities are. My first priority, I'd like to see the probate judge's office taken care of, so they can record and maintain my deed. I'm willing to fight and die for that. And my second priority, roads and bridges, followed up with law enforcement. Like to make sure all the court systems, all the judges, all the, all the clerks, the sheriff, the jail, all them are funded. And then my fourth priority, what's required by law. And that would include animal control. And I, for one, kind of in a difficult to a lot of people, I don't want to be spending taxpayer dollars for an indefinite period of time to take care of other people's animals. Now, if people want to rescue them, great, I'm on for that. But I don't want to be spending my taxpayer dollars on veterinarian services for somebody else's animal. I really think the owner of the animal needs to take care of veterinarian services. And I do believe your request for proposal, your request for proposal, I think meets the intent of the law. I think you've got sufficient time. Granted, the rescue people, and I hate to see any animal ever put down for any reason. I've had to do it. It's, it's not fun. But we can't be taking care of every animal in the world. We can't be taking care of indefinite periods of time. I would like to ask that we do get the animal control department set up with processes that would enable quick and economical ways to adopt the animals. And I'd also like to ask that the animal control department maintain an up-to-date list of all the pictures of all the animals in here and their timelines. So, and I think I heard somebody say a coalition of people to get together to help animal control, figure out how to resolve the problem. I'd be on for that. I'd be on for that. Questions?
Thank you.
Roy Mattson.
Roy. How are you doing this morning, Roy?
Good, thank you, Colin. Gentlemen, good to see you. And I'm here regarding the library situation, which you're well aware of. I don't know if you've read the most recent policy, but I just have a couple of statements about the whole, about the library situation. The people that established this country went to war over taxation without representation. Went to war over that. They didn't want their money spent by someone with no accountability. And what we've been looking at here is the fact that we are giving Limestone County money to the city of Athens with absolutely no account, no representation on the library board, no input on their policy. And that's, that's just irresponsible, frankly. It's irresponsible. It's not representing the people of Limestone County when you just hand over the, give them a blank check, give them the money and say, "Well, whatever you guys want to do." By the way, the current library board has been irresponsible and incompetent for 15 years. The policy that they've had published and they've given to the state has been out of date. They haven't had the right policy out there for representatives to look, for county residents to look at. I mean, it's just, they have done a terrible job. And yet here we are with their latest policy, which says the city's going to appoint all the board members and the board's going to stay just the way it's been for the last 15 years. Going like, really? We're just going to keep giving money to them? Right? When they've botched this up for the last 15 years? And we're just going to hand it over? And they still haven't produced, after two revisions, still have not produced a policy which places county members, county representatives on their board? And you know, frankly, we can keep talking about, "Oh, well, they're going to do it, they're going to do it, they're going to do it." They're not going to do it until you tell them no money. That's what's going to happen, right? Until the county commissioners say, "You're not getting any money until we have in hand a policy that..." And in fact, not just a policy, but until we have two people on the board, you're not getting any money. Until you say that, it's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. Because they've been doing this for 15 years and are doing it right now. So I just ask you to take care of the residents of the county, insist on accountability with the money that we give them. And by the way, they get most of their money based on county residents. Because it's a, the state pays them by the head of Limestone County. So most of the money that they get from the state is actually county money. And of course, we give them a check for, I don't know what it is, $80,000 a year, right? It's county money. Why aren't there county members on the board? It's not really a joint board unless there's county members on the library board, even though they serve Limestone County residents. So I just encourage you to be bold with the Athens city and with the library board and just, and just be very straightforward with them in saying, "Look, you guys can produce a polit, you guys can give us two board members tomorrow. Do it. And when you do, you'll get your money." Right? And if you don't, you won't. It's a pretty simple thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy.
We have an email from Elizabeth Stewart. We have an email from Elizabeth Stewart. Our attorney Drew Dale is going to read.
All right, go ahead, Drew.
Okay, this is comments from Elizabeth Stewart. The subject is the library. "Good morning, Commissioners. I'm sorry I cannot be in attendance today, but I wanted to send in a library update. Over the course of the summer, the library policy has been revised twice. Some positive changes in updated policy include the removal of language on quote, 'unvetted access,' end quote, to all material regardless of age. Also, the policy finally states that an adult in Alabama is 19 and above to match Alabama state law. The library policy was stating adults are 16. Board makeup is still a huge concern. Library Board Chair Chris Anderson stated the county intends to continue paying the fiscal year and the library will be asking for additional money from the county. Limestone County Commission still has no appointed seats on this board to help with policy input. Chris Anderson stated he intends to stay on his chair for four more years to serve 18 consecutive years as chair. The library is still submitting for state funding using Limestone County resident population versus exclusively Athens city, as if they have equal representation on the library board and policy input. The lack of county representation and honestly professionalism with this board needs to change. If the library board does not represent county citizens, then the county shouldn't be funding. Library card policy outlined in the latest policy revision is not in line with APLS amendments passed in May. APLS stated that minors need to have library cards and adults should have separate ones. ALCPL board is creating multiple options for minor library cards and some allow minors to access adult material without parental consent. There should be a minor card and an adult card. This aligns with state laws for adults and APLS amendments. No minor should have access to adult material without parental consent. The book reconsideration process does not align with APLS. The governor asked all libraries to streamline this process. The outlined policy, the outlined process in the policy is arduous and makes the board consider adult material in books in light of context and quantity. APLS defined obscenity as stated obscene material should not be in books for minors. Parents that find obscenity by APLS definition in books should be able to easily report without a lengthy process. Obscenity should be based off of the state-provided definition APLS provided and not contextualized. Again, APLS, the governor and local citizens are not and have never called for book banning. The request has been for sensible policies that ensure adult material stays in adult sections. The existing policy still needs work to align with APLS library code. This is the only library for county and city citizens. Both deserve representation on this library board. Until these issues are addressed, no funding should be provided by the county. Thank you, Elizabeth Stewart."
No further comments?
No further comments. Well, thank everybody for the comments. And like I said, if you ever cannot make it in, you're more than welcome to email in a comment. Moving forward, first thing on the agenda today will be the minutes from August 16th to 24th. Anybody got any discussion with any of the minutes? Here none, we'll move on to the claims. The claim's an amount of $3,796,037.15. Anybody got any issue with any claim? Has anybody got any conflicts of interest or anything coming from the commission body today?
No, sir.
All right, everybody. No public hearings, we have none. Resolutions, no orders. Will be to approve a resolution adopting February the 21st to the 20th, excuse me, 23rd, 25th, as of the 2025 severe weather tax holiday. So that will be, will, anybody got any discussion with that? And we do this every year. All right, number two will be to approve a resolution approving the renewal slash modifications to the Limestone County Solid Waste Management Plan. And this is something that we have joint with the city and me and Mark sit on the board. The biggest revisment in there was the county has went into the county contract garbage business, down to the contractor's business, ended up picking it up. That's one of the things that had to be revised and plus a couple of other small items. But us and the city has to jointly do that together. But we have all got that together. So anybody got anything with that? All right, number, contracts, agreements and MOUs and grants. Number one would be to approve to award the Department of Homeland Security grant for a safe boat, 27-foot center console patrol boat for the sheriff's department. The federal share of the grant is, will be $336,674. And the county share is $112,225. And I know there was some concern with this originally. But the $112,225, the sheriff has some overrun his budget from this year left over. So it'll all come out of that. It'll be left over from this year. And that'll be just some stuff he had left over from his salaries and things like that. Anybody got any issues with that? And I want to thank the sheriff for always working with his budget, coming in under budget, stuff like that. He always does a great job. So this will be paid for out of what he's got left over. Anybody anything left there? Any concerns? All right, moving on. Next thing will be to approve a contract with TARCOG for the council and agent program. This begins October the 1st through the 2024 through September the 30th of 2025. The total compensation and reimbursements will be not to exceed the sum of $129,530. $530, anybody got any discussion with that? All right, number three will be to approve a contract with TARCOG in the Council Agent Senior RX Program. And this is beginning October the 1st of 2024. And this will go through September the 30th of 2025. And this is for the amount of $20,848. And all these TARCOG grants are just something we redo every year. So anybody got discussion with that? All right, number four will be to approve a lease agreement between the Limestone County Commission and Jaren R. Hammond for a property located at 521 Highway 72 West. This was added on. We was waiting on some final things on that. Anybody got any discussion, Drew, you need to alleviate with that, any?
We were just waiting for negotiations to conclude on that before we got it added to the agenda.
Okay.
It's, should be fine, it's on there now. And things can be added to the agenda in the work session as per normal course.
Okay. Anybody got discussion with this? All right, budget revisions, we have none. Emergency purchases, we have none. Board appointments, we have none. And while we're on the board appointments, I will stop right there a minute and kind of address some concerns with the email that Elizabeth sent in. I've talked with all y'all commissioners and we are working with the city. They've worked well with us. And we have worked with Shane. And I know they're working on revising some policies and things like that. And we had a conference call with Drew the other day. And one of the, because they had an $80,000, they didn't ask for any more money. It was still $80,000, we'll be level funding if we do. But we will hold that money until we get our board appointments. That was the conversation we had with, you want to leave it on, Drew?
That's correct. That money is, it is in the budget, but it's not going to be immediately paid out.
And one of the reasons that we held up was that there's an attorney involved asking if the board is, and they're waiting on some answers on that. And I know I've talked with all y'all about that. But as quick as they get that part cleared up, we're ready to move forward. And everything is moving forward for other county to get two appointments on the board.
And Mr. Chairman, one of the issues with that is with the other attorney involved, we want to make sure that we're not going to run afoul of any kind of, any kind of claims or any kind of thing that we would need to address should that move forward. So that's another reason that we would, we would likely delay payment and delay action.
But the $80,000 will be delayed until we get our board appointments. That was the original agreement. That is public knowledge. And that was, we're saying it now. So even if it is in the budget, it will not be paid out until we get our board appointments. So moving forward, anybody got any discussion with that? I just wanted to hit on that while we were at the board appointment process. All right. And as quick as they get this other resolved issue, we'll go back to working on the other issues. So, but it has to go through, and it has to go through a process. It's not just easy. It's got to go like the solid waste plan. It takes several weeks to get this back and forth, to get this. Because we have to go to the city, have to go back to county and back forth. So, all right. Award of bids and quotes, we have none. Personnel policy and staffing actions. First will be to approve to hire Anna Grace Graham as a buildings worker. Anybody got any discussion with her? Just want to welcome her aboard. She thinks she'll be a great employee. Approved, second will be to approve to transfer Taylor Dobson from real property appraiser to chief appraiser trainee. Anybody got discussion with that? And this is like we do in a lot of offices. This is just for somebody's retiring. And this will be taking one's place that's retiring. And it'll go away after that's over. All right, merit increases. We have several listed below. Anybody got any issue with the merit increases? Or anybody out there? All right, engineers report, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, Madison Preserve subdivision phase two that's listed on here, I'm requesting to pull that from the agenda. They had some, some punchless items that haven't been completed yet. So we want to move that to the next agenda. The remaining three items for your consideration are Chapel Landing Phase One. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating nine lots in District Two. Lauderdale Farms, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District One. Gales West Phase One. This is a major for preliminary approval, creating 57 lots in District One.